See, it's even starting. Good morning. I want to welcome each and every one of you to our Marshall County Board of Supervisors as we meet today in regular session on February twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen at nine a.m. The board is meeting on the third floor of the courthouse in the Room Two northeast corner with all three members present. At this time, I'd like to ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good to see everybody here. Just a note to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion will be present at which time the public may participate, and a roll call vote will follow. First item on the agenda is the approval or amendment of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
A motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
I second it. Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, item number two. This is a master matrix with Kevin Blood Dairy Farms Construction Permit Application. This is a public hearing. Facility number ID number six zero one zero one. At this public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of a construction permit application of an existing permitted animal confinement feeding operation for Kevin Blood Dairy Farms. Were there any written comments presented?
No, there weren't.
Anyway, any individuals in the audience, would they like to comment on this application?
Sue Blaisdell, ten fourteen South Second Street, Marshalltown. I would like to know the watershed that this is in and exactly where the water would get polluted if the storage tanks don't work.
Bill, do you have a answer to that?
This is out in the middle of the country, and this is just from my observation as I've traveled by it over the years. And there's really no lakes, there are no water pollution possibilities there where it would pollute the water of any town. Now, anytime you would have a loss of some sort of that magnitude, there could be some problems. But written into this whole thing, this whole scheme is how to handle that, and this is not something that I would venture to be a real possibility. But it would flow south from State Center, and I'm telling you about all I know because I've not... Does that help you, Sue?
No.
I'll have an answer.
We got Dave looking it up right now.
I'll have an answer for you here in just a moment. Getting you to the site maps. I know from that area it goes towards Rhodes. What's the name of the creek over there?
Clear Creek.
Clear Creek. It's in the Clear Creek watershed. We've dealt with this several times. This is also the watershed that is owned partially by Iowa State, a bunch of land over there that I know it's Clear Creek.
And we're also following what the DNR has recommended, and the DNR, I believe this is an expansion of the current facility, which has already been approved and is approved by the DNR. And you've got to follow the DNR rules and regulations.
It is Clear Creek. Distance to a major source of river is one mile or more. Distance to a major source or lake, one mile or more. Distance to headwaters or anything else, one mile or more. Distance to surface water, one mile or more.
So Clear Creek goes into what river?
Clear Creek is down by Rhodes, but this is part of that watershed. Eventually, if something were to flow from this property, it would have to go towards the city of Rhodes, which is Clear Creek.
Clear Creek could get to the Skunk, I think, next.
I believe eventually.
And the Skunk eventually gets to what cities?
Skunk flows to Des Moines, which flows into...
It's going to go southeast.
Right. It winds up in the Mississippi.
What about Osceola?
I don't know if it goes through there. That's way outside of our county. Eventually, it would have to get into Timber Creek, and I'm showing here. I would say it would go to the North Skunk. It's got a lot of miles to go before it gets there. North Skunk Tributary. Going by the flood insurance map.
And that's if the equipment would fail, correct?
Well, even more than that.
You'd have to have a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be... I don't know how you would get it there. It's a number of miles.
You'd say it's almost impossible, but anything's possible.
Oh, I'll never say anything's impossible.
Everything's possible, so... Any other comments? Hearing none? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the hearing.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number three, Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one zero. This is a resolution, Master Matrix, Kevin Blood Dairy Farms' application for construction permit on an existing animal confinement feeding operation. Facility number ID six zero one zero one. Construction permit application of existing animal confinement feeding operations from Kevin Blood Dairy Farms was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican, Marshalltown, Iowa on February seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, and the Mid Iowa Enterprise, State Center, Iowa, on February nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Were there any written comments?
No.
Any individuals from the public hearing? Is there any comments, questions, or objections at the hearing? Now therefore be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors to recommend approval by the Department of Natural Resources on the construction permit application of the existing animal confinement feeding operation from Kevin Blood Dairy Farms dated at Marshalltown, Iowa this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen.
I would motion that we adopt Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one zero, Master Matrix, Kevin Blood Dairy Farms' application for a construction permit on an existing animal confinement feeding operation. Facility ID number six zero one zero one.
I second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number four, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget amendment. This is a public hearing. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the amendment to the current two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen county budget. Were there any written comments?
No.
Of the fifteen individuals in our meeting this morning, are there individuals, any oral comments, written comments, or objections? Hearing and seeing none, and I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, item number five, this is Resolution twenty fifteen, Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one zero dash two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget amendment. The proposed two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget amendment was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican and the State Center Mid Iowa Enterprise on February twelve, two thousand and fifteen. Were there any written comments received?
No.
No written comments received. Any individuals in attendance, any comment on the public hearing? Now therefore be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen county budget amendment be adopted, and the county auditor and recorder be authorized to certify and file the budget amendment as published and presented at the hearing. This is dated at Marshalltown, Iowa this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. I entertain a motion on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution two oh one five dash zero zero one one, two oh one, for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget amendment.
I will second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one two. This is a budget decrease in appropriation, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Pursuant to Section three thirty-one point four thirty-four parentheses six, Code of Iowa, the amendment to the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen county budget proposes decreases in appropriations of more than ten percent or five thousand dollars, whichever is greater, to the individual departments as published in the Marshalltown Times Republican, Marshalltown, Iowa, and the Mid Iowa Enterprise, State Center, Iowa on February twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Were there any written comments?
There were none.
No written comments? Any individuals attending the public hearing with any, that would like to present any oral comments, questions, or objections at the hearing? Hearing none. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the budget decrease in appropriation be reapproved and published dated at Marshalltown, Iowa this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. I entertain a motion.
I motion that we adopt this Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one two, budget decrease in appropriation for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen year.
I second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number seven, Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one three, reapropriation of Funds for Fiscal Year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Be it resolved at the count that the estimated appropriations approved by the board for the various funds and departments in the county at the hearing and during the fiscal year are adjusted to reflect expenditures incurred and be incurred by funds. In the packet, there's a list of the departments, the current appropriations, and the reapropriations for you to view if you so delay. And this was dated at Marshalltown, Iowa this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we adopt the Resolution Number four, Number two oh one five dash zero zero one three, reapportionment of funds for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number eight, lease purchase of vehicles. We open the public hearing for this. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections or to or arguments in favor of the lease purchase of vehicles from Marshall County. Did we receive any written comments?
No written comments.
Any one in attendance have any, would like to present oral comments, discussion, or questions, or objections? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. Item nine, Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one four, lease purchase agreement and certification of debt. This is kind of a lengthy thing. This is a certified copy of the resolution that shall be filed with the county auditor, and the auditor is hereby instructed to enter for collection and assess the tax hereby authorized. When annually entering such taxes for collections, the county auditor shall include the same as a part of the tax levy for debt service fund, proposes, excuse me, and then when collected, the proceeds of the taxes shall be converted into the debt service fund of the county and set aside therein to be used solely and only for the payment of the principal and of an interest on the lease purchase agreement hereby authorized and for no other purpose whatsoever. Passed and approved this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen, Marshall County, Iowa. I would make a motion to adopt a resolution. Oh, excuse me. I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
I motion that we adopt Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one four, lease purchasing agreement and certification of debt.
I'd second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just a comment, I know we've worked hard not to borrow money. This is one of these instances where we can lease these vehicles at a reasonable rate. Putting it into debt service allows us to spread the payment out over a larger area and to be able to capture the amount of money that the city of Marshalltown and other entities have tied up in TIF valuations. The only way we can enjoy those increases in valuations is through debt service. So even though we've kind of been adverse to borrowing, this is one of those times when it actually does make sense for very short term and to be able to spread it out over a larger area of valuation of property.
And we have done this in the past, and this is...
Yes.
It seems like it works out better. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, item ten, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget public hearing. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget. Were there any written comments?
No written comments.
All right, thank you. Any individuals attending the public hearing, if you have any oral comments, questions, or objections? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move we close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, item number eleven, Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one five, adopt budget and clarify taxes for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. The proposed two thousand and fifteen, sixteen county budget was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican, State Center Mid Iowa Enterprise on February twelve, two thousand and fifteen. Were there any written comments received?
No written comments.
Any individuals in the room have any comments, oral comments, questions, or objections to at the hearing? Now therefore be it resolved that the county budget for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen be and the county auditor, recorder authorized to certify and file the budget and certify the taxes as adopted, dated at Marshalltown, Iowa this twenty-fourth day of February, two thousand and fifteen. I would entertain a motion.
I would motion that we adopt Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one five, which adopts the budget and certifies the taxes for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
I second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. Gosh, we're at the consent agenda already.
Do you need oxygen?
Item number twelve is approved the minutes for regular session of February ten, two thousand and fifteen. Thirteen, manure management plan update for Breeze Hill Farms LLC, ID number six five seven seven zero. Update report received and placed on file with the following changes made to the manure management plan. Cropped, changed crop rotation or optimal yields using manure analysis or determining application rates when applying manure. Item fourteen, annual manure management plan update, Beal Farms L., Inc., Larson Site, ID number six seven one four one, update and received and placed on file with the following changes made to the manure management plan. Acres added, changed crop rotation or optimum yields using manure analysis for determining application rates when applying manure. Item fifteen, in the consent agenda, approved claims as audited and authorized the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with claims paid for the month of February, and the February list of claims will be a part of the first meeting in March. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. Item number sixteen, this is approved personnel action, change of status and change rate of pays for Cynthia Ritzel, full-time, change of status from auditor office assistant to assistant auditor and recorder. Change rate of pay from sixteen seventeen an hour to twenty ninety-two an hour, effective February twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen. And again, this is a change of status coming from the auditor's office to include now the auditor and recorder's office, kind of a step up with the pay scale.
Cynthia's been with us for quite some time. She's always been very, very active in our elections area. She will be moving over to the other side of the auditor recorder's responsibilities and is going to be handling most of the elections duties. She'll be replacing Travis Case, who has been the deputy of elections before and working hand in hand with the auditor. It's a good fit from within. She's been with the county. Oh, boy. Mary, help me out. I'd say twenty years.
I want to say two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two? Okay.
Quite a while.
It's been quite a while, and she's worked very heavily with the elections, so this is a good fit.
All right, we got a motion.
Nope, we don't.
All right, I would entertain a motion, excuse me.
I motion that we approve this personnel action.
I second it.
Now we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Grayman Bower.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number seventeen. Finally got you, Tom. From the Marshalltown Economic Development Impact Medic, Tom Dimerly, the director, is here to present an annual update. So, Tom?
Danny, I need some oxygen sitting back there.
I wore you out too, didn't I?
Jeez. I like kind of this time of year because then you're worn out. It will be too hard. Tom Dimerly, Executive Director, Marshall County Development. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Just wanted to give a quick annual update. So far, we're at forty-two RFPs for this current fiscal year, which, for your information, our fiscal year ends May thirty-first, starts June first, obviously, at that point. We've submitted twelve submittals on those. We've gotten four hits, where we've actually had prospect visits that came off those submittals. And typically, those RFPs come through our relationship with the Greater Des Moines Partnership. We are a member of that. Most of the contiguous counties around Polk County are members, and so we partner up to go to marketing and trade shows, do call trips, sales trips with site selectors. And most of what we do then is we try to go on those trips where it makes the most sense for us to do a corporate call, where we can, you know, go to Dallas, meet with the Lennox executives, St. Louis, Chicago, Minneapolis, and really try to focus and put our efforts into those areas, so we can kind of kill two birds with one stone and get the most return on investment from those. One thing I wanted to bring up, in November, we started a great new partnership with the Iowa Small Business Development Center. We were historically underserved as a county by the Iowa Small Business Development Centers, where if we had entrepreneurs that came through my door, I was really working with them to help develop business plans, and we have resources on our website to help those folks that are wanting to start a business. But that really wasn't what our core was. And so when a new director came on board that I had some past partnerships and relationships with, I kind of leaned on her pretty hard to say, hey, you know, why don't we get a presence here? Why don't we have somebody who's in Marshall County, working with our entrepreneurs, helping people develop business plans, or helping our existing business with, you know, refining your business plan, so to speak? So Ted Baird, who is out of the Ames Office, is now holding regular office hours over here, one day a month, and that's actually grown to about three days a month already. So he's got eight clients currently that we've been working with since November that we think good things are going to come from. We think that we'll see some new construction coming from those, even yet this construction season. They're going to fill spaces in the downtown, they're going to fill spaces on Thirteenth Street, and they're going to fill spaces out on the south side of town. So that's pretty exciting. So far, we haven't incurred any expenses tied to that partnership, but I think the more that we engage Ted, the more that'll become a conversation point where we have to defray perhaps some of their expenses in coming over here, travel costs, things of that nature. As you guys know, being in your budget season, everybody's budgets are tight. And so we're aware of that and ready for it, but we're certainly not going to start that conversation until they want to pursue it at that point. You probably saw in the newspaper that we did conduct a housing study in June of last year that was completed in roughly September. From that, we developed a housing committee, and I think the medic board of directors saw the outcomes of that housing study that really, by the numbers, reaffirmed what we were hearing from our business retention program, which is that, you know, companies like Emerson, or Lennox, or Meckdine, or the hospital, really across the boards, were struggling to get quality employees, for one reason being, they couldn't find the quality housing here in town. And I think one of the, or two of the, really, to me, two of the numbers that really jumped out to me were that twenty-two percent of our local workforce here is commuting greater than forty-five miles. So if you think about that, we're really shipping a lot of the economic gains that we get from the companies in town who are doing well. We're shipping those down the road to some other community. And there's a lot of different reasons that that occurs. It's not strictly tied to housing. I recognize that, everybody recognizes that. But housing is a piece of that stool, so to speak. And if you think about somebody who takes a new job, typically they don't come into a community and just buy a house right away. I don't know about everybody else in the room, but when I take a job, I like to kind of kick the tires on it a little bit and see if it's going to be the right fit, try out the community, those types of things. If we don't have those quality rentals to begin with, we're going to lose the gains that come from that job created. And, you know, if you have a spouse, children, very quickly, those other individuals get engaged in civic groups, churches, education systems, things like that. And so really, you've lost that gain right after that if you don't have that rental to kick the tires, so to speak. And so we've created the housing committee, a couple of subcommittees within that group that are working on. One that I'm spearheading is an analysis of what sites do we have in town that are conducive to housing development? Because I think in talking with some of the larger scale developers, a lot of them will say that our rental rates are low enough that they can't really make much money by doing rentals here in town. So one of the biggest expenses that comes with any new development is infrastructure, roads, sewer, water, things of that nature. So, you know, rather than going into a field and busting in all new infrastructure, what do we already have in place? You know, what do we have to go out there and market? And we've met with, you know, some of the larger real estate developers in the state, and we're getting quite a bit of interest in some of those sites that are currently sitting there, ready to go. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to see some growth in that area. And that, from the housing consultant, was really the low hanging fruit. When they looked at our rental, excuse me, our rental market, we were running less than two percent vacancy rate. That didn't go, that didn't go look at the converted single family to multi-family. That was just looking at more of our larger scale developments, where you can go rent an apartment or a townhome, things of that nature. Less than two percent is critical. Critical from the standpoint of a healthy housing market has a five to seven percent vacancy rate. So we're well below that. So, you know, even with our lower market rate rentals, there's opportunity that exists there, and that's why I refer to it as the low hanging fruit. So we're out pushing those... So we're out pushing those sites pretty hard right now and trying to meet with some of the larger developers. At the same time, we're trying to work with some of our local developers to do some of the infill. So where you've got the larger guys that'll go in and throw in, I'm just using rough numbers, you know, twenty-four units, something like that, we've also got some locals that'll go in and do two or three units, or four units. So what opportunities do we have for them? If you look at what the city of Marshawn has done historically, you've seen a three-year hundred percent tax abatement was kind of the standard housing program. Well, I, that has gotten us to the point we're at. So, you know, we're trying to also go out and look at what have other communities done as far as partnerships to spur housing growth. Some examples of that have been, you know, local banks doing attractive financing for home building. Communities have done different tax programs, different infrastructure programs. So we're trying to kind of build an à la carte menu for us to then go back in and say, okay, what makes sense for us from a community standpoint to help spur the housing investments? And I think the city has been pretty conducive to that as we've had some of those conversations. So housing has become a pretty big priority. I mean, I think the medic board in the end said, we get it. We're, if we keep doing what we've been doing and nobody really grabs housing, you know, grabs it and goes, then we're just going to continue to limp along. So, to some degree, I've always been a more of an industrial, commercial development kind of guy. I'm learning to be a residential kind of guy, slowly, but surely. And on the housing note, you know, as we look at the past year, we've seen some successes with the Tallcorn opening up and the Iowa Wholesale Project. And we were fortunate to work with those developers, I'm getting those done. And so, as I look at the east side of the downtown, that brings me on to the next kind of priority or item that we've been working on, which is what do we do when the hospital finally relocates out to the south side? And I say finally because a lot of people don't realize that that's going to be a long process. That's not going to happen overnight. So we did spearhead a working group, a cross-section of the community, to sit down and say, you know, what would we ideally like to see on the site? In a perfect world and everything fell into place, what would it be? And it was kind of an interesting process because we ended up with a, it was like a tray. Dave, I know you participated in that process. And you ended up with a lot of different deals, so to speak, as we pieced it in. And some of those involved STEM campus initiatives in partnership with the school system. Obviously, reuse as a commercial tax pain reuse. And so, that is now in front of the board and trustees at the hospital, and they're evaluating, how does this fit in with our long-term plan? And there'll be more to come on that. But that's going to be a marathon, not a sprint. And then, as I kind of just look at the list of the past year, and kind of go down the list of things that we've gotten to work on, I'll go back to the, it's a marathon, not a sprint. But obviously, the power plant is just coming online as far as the impacts, the economic impacts from the construction. You're going to see a large influx very shortly here of a lot of workers coming in town. And that's just going to further pinch our housing market in the short term. We did work with the mall on the Hobby Lobby project. That was an interesting one. It's amazing how attractive Hobby Lobby is to malls, just because of the ancillary businesses that tend to follow them. What didn't get a lot of airplay on that is that the mall ownership is going to be making significant investments in that facility. Anything from facades and signage to new lighting, things of that nature, to really try to reinvigorate that property and bring the taxes back up on it and basically the utility that it has to the community. Been fortunate enough to get to know a gentleman named Jim Tyson. He's the owner of Tyson's. They're going to be adding forty thousand square feet of retail space. And to give you a reference, their current facility is roughly fifty thousand square feet. So it almost doubles that site. And we've got some other developments that are going on there. They actively want to go out and partner to get other retail opportunities that are complementary to their business. What JBS has been making significant investments, this goes back roughly four years. I think it goes back to four years, but four years is my timeline. They've had issues with the city as far as the water treatment out there. And they're just finishing up what I believe to be close to a five million dollar upgrade. That'll fix what has been a problem for roughly twenty years. And that was, that was, the number of meetings on that was just staggering to get it all figured out. So that's a pretty significant investment. I think it positions them for growth in the future. And then, lastly, the one that's been getting the most airplay recently here is Menards. We are excited that Menards is looking at putting a manufacturing campus on Eighteenth Avenue. That'll be a manufacturing and distribution campus. So there'll be serving stores that are within about a three-hour radius of here. The first phase of that is a trust plant. So if you can picture your housing trust systems or your floor trust systems, those will be constructed here and then shipped out to a three-hour radius, plus or minus. First phase of that's going to be about forty jobs. We do know that there are two, Phase Two and Three are flowing out there. So the first, the first phase is going to use about twenty acres of the fifty that will be acquired. It's required the extension of rail. So if you can, in your head, imagine the rail line that runs south on Eighteenth Avenue and terminates in the Marshawn Air Soccer Club, the soccer field's right there. That'll be coming out. It'll be extended down the right-of-way on Eighteenth Avenue, where it will ultimately terminate into the Menards site. And we've worked with the rail ownership to not only acquire the rail, but they also own the soccer fields out there, and I'm referring to Fishers. And so, one of the biggest things or concerns right off the bat was that, here we've got this great facility for the kids, we can't go tearing it out. It just doesn't work. And I kind of joked that when I first moved back to town, I was at my nephew's soccer game, and my sister caught me looking around at the area, and she says, what are you doing? And I said, well, I was just admiring all the infrastructure in the area. And she said, if you ever want to come to Thanksgiving again, you don't look at these fields. And I said, oh, I know, I get it, I get it. So, so one of the biggest concerns or discussions going into it was, how do we make sure that these soccer fields get put back better than we found them? And that has been a concern of Menards from the get-go. And so, so we will be relocating the entrance to the soccer fields out there. It will come off of Olive Street in the future, which alleviates a safety concern. I think that if you've ever been out to the soccer fields, getting out of there when all our industry's let out about three-thirty or four during practice can be, it's called sporty, because cars are moving on a pretty good foot down Eighteenth Avenue. So it's going to alleviate a safety concern. And then, it will also include, Menards will be putting in new parking lots to access the fields to the north. The drive will be paved, new fencing, water on-site, so they haven't been able to irrigate in the past, so, because of pressures. So for Menards to get water, we have to drop it down Eighteenth Avenue with an eighteen-inch main. They'll bore under the road, and then Menards is going to run a line back up north so that they can irrigate in the future. First phase, about a seven million dollar investment, about three million of that is in infrastructure. We did do a TIF rebate with them to defray the rail expense. We have historically been short of rail-serve sites here in town. And so, as a part of the development agreement with the city, Menards has agreed to allow us to put in a switch in the future to swing rail off of there into other areas, which would require a large crossing on Olive Street, but it was not impossible. When this project first started eighteen months ago, we really thought it was going to be impossible because we didn't have any rail-serve sites. And so, this one has taken a little creativity and a lot of partners. And eventually, we will be acknowledging all those partners. But it's had about seven or eight different moving pieces, and so, we're excited to see it come to fruition. So that one's been getting the most attention lately. We are also, as a community, positioned to receive designation from the state of Iowa. So one of Governor Brain's sets programs is the Skilled Iowa Initiative. It's run by Iowa Workforce Development. And we've had to meet a number of metrics on that in order to achieve that designation. And we would be one of the largest communities in the state to receive that, and that would be a county-wide designation. And so, I know it's not in your genus, you can't take official action today, but I did invite Arturo Sanchez with Iowa Workforce Development to briefly discuss that program. Hopefully, we can get it as an agenda item in the future, and.
That's the one you was supposed to send me?
Yes, it was.
Okay. See, Lisa, that's the reason.
Yeah, I take full responsibility, Lisa. I go to his charge.
Don't that bus just run you over?
You just slapped me off the hook.
That's fine, I hit him on the front end with his oxygen gun. So, Arturo, I'll give it over to you, and then I'll step back up and push the actual form.
Okay, all right.
That needs to be signed.
My name is Arturo Sanchez, I'm with the Iowa Workforce Development. I'm the business marketing for Region Six, and of course, covers Marshall, Taimon, Houghton, and Houchee County. Like he said, with the Skilled Iowa Initiative that we started in, here in the state of Iowa in two thousand and ten, we're allowing the state of Iowa, and actually, communities and regions, to become what is called a skilled-ready community. With Marshalltown, we are really exposed to becoming a skilled community. If you see in your metrics, there are four different metrics that we need to meet. Two on the business side, and then two on the workforce. So in order for us to even be eligible for this designation, we need ten percent of the total number of businesses in the county in which we have already met. We have exceeded that expectation already. If you flip the page on the metrics, you can see that the total number of businesses that have signed up to become or recognize this initiative, we have sixteen percent of the total businesses in Marshall County. And we needed, the other metric for the businesses was twenty percent of the largest employers, which would be like JBS, for example, Fishers, Lennox. On that one, we have fifty-five percent of the largest employers in Marshall County. The other metric was from the workforce. This, let me back up a little bit. With the Skilled Iowa, there's an assessment that is given to the public so that employers can recognize their skills, their skill set, or any of their current job openings. The assessment is a three-part assessment. It's in reading, math, and located information. The assessment gets measured from level one up to level seven. And if, in order for an individual to even qualify for a certificate, they must get at least a level three. That would be the minimum they can get on any one of the assessments. Then it goes to level four. Level three would mean bronze level, four silver, five will be gold, six and seven will be plums. So, when we talk about the metrics, we need to certify five percent of the total current labor force. We have almost met that goal. We only need about a hundred more individuals that are currently working with this certificate. That, this number comes from people that want to change careers, that want to get into different programs. Like, for example, here in Marshall County or Marshalltown, Iowa Valley has been a great partner in this program. The certificate has actually been incorporated in different trainings, like the CDL that we're going to be starting in March. The utility program that was run through Alain Energy, the nursing programs. So this certificate gets incorporated in those programs before they can even start it. So they must have a certificate in those areas. The other was the transitioning, which is twenty percent. That would be the number of unemployed job seekers. That one, we have already exceeded. And that's because, again, with the different programs that we have, we, it's a, it's an obligation for them to have this certificate. It's a must-have, otherwise, they won't be able to participate in any of the programs. And of course, through the state of Iowa, we also recommend everybody to have a certificate. The reason why we're here today, again, like Heath said, not Heath, I'm sorry, Tom, we want to, we want to be recognized as a work-ready community. In order for us to get that designation, we need the approval from the board of supervisors for Marshall County.
What entices an individual to be a part of this?
For businesses, it would, it would be that they recognize the certificate, and then they can utilize it in hiring, for example. If they have a job opening, they can say, we recognize the NTRC. We would recommend a level, bronze level, for example. Like Lennox has used it for many, many years. They recommend them to have at least a silver certificate. So that's why we, the numbers are a little bigger, because of Lennox. Lennox has been using it for years. Right now, we have JBS that is currently using it to do their maintenance program. They don't require a silver like Lennox, but at least a bronze in order for them to make it into the maintenance program.
And just so I'm clear, when you're talking of the different levels, the bronze, the silver, or the gold, you have to qualify for that. So if you're not really applying yourself, you may not get any farther than bronze? And.
That is right. Or might I even get a certificate?
Might I? So, the education that they're getting through Iowa Valley, do they pay for that?
No, the actual certificate is free. Instead of Iowa is covering all the cost for the certificate. It would be about a close to a fifty-dollar certificate if you had to pay for the actual assessments. But we are covering that cost for any resident of Iowa.
And the assessments are just testing this done of the individuals?
Yes, on the three different parts, the map, reading, and the locating.
You're using the NCRC, which is the National, and the college is certified to do that?
Yes, they are. We actually, me and personally, in Region Six, I have met with all of my schools in the whole region. And I'm going to allow them all to have access to the certificate for free, so they can become a proctor. And we can give them access to giving out the assessment for free to any of the graduates and seniors. So we're trying to be a little proactive on that end.
So we're here today, you have the form in front of you.
Yeah.
Asking for the county to sign on, just like one of the businesses has.
Yes.
And that allows us then to go.
Get into that certification.
Get the certification. And it's one more thing that I can kind of put a feather in my cap, because I'm out marketing. The county is a place to do business.
Okay.
So if you get that information.
Yes.
To Lisa?
Yes.
On a future agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good job, Heath.
Do you guys have any more questions? I did, I do have my business card, I can leave it with you guys. If any employer, we have employers here that are not currently a member of the Skilled Iowa, want to become a member, definitely get ahold of me.
Does it cost the employer to get?
It doesn't cost the employer anything. Anything that goes through the state of Iowa, there's only no charge.
I have a lay down on the gun, but if you guys want to go take it, I'll take it.
You take it?
Yeah, we got to get that hundred number to. Yes, so.
Get it on there, we'll get it on the next meeting.
That'll be great.
And discuss it then.
Okay. Yeah, I do, please. And in all due fairness to Tom, Heath is one of our other economic development people in Region Six from another county, so.
Yeah, sorry. I've been working with all my different. I think I'm the better-looking one.
Well, at least he didn't call you dead.
He didn't call me dead, that's right.
You know, the day is looking up.
Yeah.
As far as working with the county, I know there's things that we do with you that are in-kind contributions besides our monetary contribution. How has GIS assisted you this year? Are you using that very much?
Absolutely. Not nearly to the level that I did when I first arrived in town, because I had to build all the maps at that point for a lot of the sites. So I'm able to recycle a lot of that information, so I don't have to get in on Wayne and his team nearly to the degree that I did at the beginning. But like with, I'll use Menards, for example, they've been right, ready to go and have helped develop a number of different items at that point. And then I also worked with Jared to dig up information on different properties, things of that nature, when I'm not able to access it through the assessors.
Okay, the assessor's working well with you also? Okay, everybody's playing nicely in the sandbox?
For the most part, yeah. There's always going to be hiccups here and there, but we get past it. You know, the thing that, on the GIS side, I did work with the Beacon System in another area, and that was always nice because you could actually manipulate maps. So I didn't have to rely on GIS nearly to the degree that I do here. But I know that different counties will like to go in different directions. So for the most part, yeah, everything's working fairly well.
You know, to me, we see a lot of out-of-state companies. You know, to me, we, we see a lot of out-of-state companies, I go to Hobby Lobby, Menards, Tysons, you know, that are really building here.
Yeah.
Expanding here. What, what, what is attracting, and then, you know, I guess I, I don't want to cut you, cut anything short and say, look at all the other things we're doing too, with that, that fast freeze program down, down on, on East Main Street. There's a lot of smaller, non, people don't see them, but they're really, they're really, you're really been involved with that.
There's a lot of things going on, and one of the things that I want to point out with Meg is, we work with, all the way from the single employer, I'll use a stylist, for example. You know, we help them enter into that SBDC system, and ultimately, they're going to fill a space and, and, you know, generate revenues from that, all the way up to working with Menards and, and the bigger companies, and Alliant on the power plant. I mean, we worked on the power plant for, well, three years before we even got to the point where we were selected again as the site for the power plant. I mean, that was an example of where, you know, the billion-dollar project, they were evaluating sites in, in three different states, to figure out what was the best fit.
You know, I guess I look back, it's probably been, that, that has been a project for probably a good eight years, you know?
At least, beyond that.
Beyond that, you know?
We're, we're back twelve.
Yeah.
But what, what's attracting the Hobby Lobbies and the Menards to expand, the Tysons? What's attracting them to Marshalltown, Marshall County?
Well, just, I, I think overall, we've got a lot going on, and, and that's being recognized. With the Tysons, it's kind of a, kind of an interesting story. I was meeting with Jim Tyson, and I said, "You know, Jim, when, when Menards built, everybody thought that it was really going to hurt you guys, and, and, you know, what do you think?" And he said, "Well, I'm here expanding my business today, Tom, what do you think?" You know, so you get kind of a, on that, on that degree, you're going to get a bit of a clustering that's occurring. So, if you look, you've got Sears, Hoka, Hoka, which is who bought Iowa Wholesale Supply, the Menards, oh, and Tysons right there, I mean, you've got a cluster, so that's driving that. With Hobby Lobby, they're just, they're in expansion mode, and, you know, I think that we're seeing a shift in our retail trade analysis, which is driving some of those retailers, you know? The four lane highways can be a blessing and a curse at the same time, you know? So, so our residents are able to go access other markets so quickly. And, and it's funny, I know, I knew people that would go to Hobby Lobby on a Saturday, and then, you know, then they shop, and they do other business and aims and those kinds of things. And so, you know, with Menards expanding, we're seeing that shift where we're, we're able to retain more of that, that dollar back here. And then, that ultimately leads to a Hobby Lobby saying, "Okay, now your pull factors are up, or your, your leakage is down, and so, we're going to go ahead and, and expand in, in your area." Like I said, four lane highways can be a death and a curse, you know? We're able to access markets, and, and a lot of times, we get compared to, just because of size, industry makeup, like a Mason City or Ford Dodge. And it's really not a fair comparison when you start to look at pole area and, and retail trade area. We really get beat up pretty hard by the, the metro and aims, as it relates to car purchases, things of that nature. And then, commuting patterns as a whole, you know, getting back to the housing discussion. A lot of that, that explosive growth that you're seeing in the housing markets in the metro area or the, the east side of the metro, so your Bonrants and your Altoona's, you know, that's, that's representative of that twenty-two percent that, that we're losing. And so, you know, the goal is, let's capture just a little bit of that twenty-two percent, pull it back here. And by doing that, we're going to further drive these other quality of life, and I kind of quote that a little bit, because a lot of times, that's what people equate to retail, or do you have the, the dining and shopping opportunities that I'm looking for? Well, that's all based on, on median incomes and demographics. A lot of the, a lot of the decision-makers on these larger, you know, I use the box retailers, just because of, those are the ones that I think that the demographics really drive their decision-making. I mean, they really just put a pin on a map, and then they start looking at numbers. And, and so, we slowly, incrementally have to keep shifting our numbers in the right direction, and we'll see more of those opportunities present themselves.
We're becoming a region within the region.
Yes.
Our, our, our sales leakage dollars have been diminishing.
Yes.
More, more of those dollars are staying here, and that helps the local economy and the local retailers, not just the big guys.
Sure.
There's no doubt about it. Get back to the, the Alliant thing, how big that is in the region. I just had one of the Alliant folks in our business that is renting a home in Montour. So, that's how big this regional project has become, it's not just us here, it's, it's stretching out a long ways.
And, and you know, housing isn't, I think, as I mentioned at the meeting last week, the, the, the housing isn't an issue that's just relegated to us. It, it's occurring, it's a conversation that's occurring throughout Iowa. If you're not in one of the major, major metro areas who are pulling people in, housing's an issue. So, so we're really trying to get creative on how we tackle that. And, and part of our housing study, really, we, we had gaps across the whole spectrum. So, so in your very low income, low income, moderate income, high income, there were, there were gaps sitting there. And if you look at most of the new housing starts right now, most of those are custom-built. Nobody's really in that speculative market. So, you know, we're even, we're even talking about, how, how do we clean up some neighborhoods? How do we do neighborhood revitalization? You know, it only takes one property to, to start bringing down the rest of the street, the block. If you get that foreclosed property in there that nobody can do anything with, doesn't it make sense to go in and knock it down and then make it available to a developer? Put up a house that fits that neighborhood's price range, but is new, clean? And I don't know about everybody else in the room, but when my neighbor mows his lawn, I feel like I got to mow my lawn, and I'm horrible about that. I mean, first to admit it, you know? You showed me your sidewalk, I got to get out there and show them my sidewalk and get it cleared, you know? A little peer pressure never hurts, so...
It's called exerting energy, Tom.
Well, you know, I saw you up here earlier, and I felt for you, you know? But, so, I mean, that's, that's kind of the scope or the spectrum of housing. So, a lot of times, you know, everybody likes the shiny new penny or whatever, you know? But, but how do we tackle housing as a, as a community, as a, a greater issue? And I think that that's, the nice thing about this committee that we've put together is that it really is a cross-section of individuals. So, you've got real estate financing, all the way to representatives of Region Six who are more in the housing rehab side of things, with different programs and things of that nature. The city's represented there because they have their housing department, which, if you're not aware, we have one of the best housing departments in a lot of cities. With Michelle and her program, she's very good at bringing in some of those dollars to be doing rehab and those things. So, how do we complement those efforts? How do we, how do we tackle it as a greater issue?
You know, part of, part of our repurposing of the hospital complex...
That was a discussion...
Was, was high-end housing. We're, we're pretty good shape on our, our low and moderate income housing, we have plenty of that, but we, we need some high-end housing to keep these people that are working in some of our really high-end jobs not living in the Ames, the Des Moines, the Ankenys.
And, and the thing is, there's no programs for those, to help put some meat on the bone for the builders.
No.
If you, if you want to go build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house right now, on a speculative basis, there's not a lot of money made on it, especially if you got to put in infrastructure and, and everything else. So, like, that site on the east end of the downtown, really, I know that there's concerns about the impacts that that'll have, but really, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, because to go find a block, or not a block, twelve blocks of available square footage in the downtown area or anywhere on the north side is pretty much unavailable. You know, we get, we get caved by the river on the north side, so you're not going that way, unless you want to pond in your backyard and water your basement. You know, it gets pretty low down there. But, so really, that's opportunity in my mind, that, that we can build upon.
Well, any more questions? I appreciate you coming up and explaining, because a lot of times, medic, you know, we get, you know, we, we are a contributor to the medic program, and we not only serve Marshalltown, but also Marshall County.
Absolutely.
And I know, and, and serving on the board and, and in your meetings, if there's an opportunity outside the, the city limits of Marshalltown, you're, you're there.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's important, you know?
And on that note, we, we try to get out to the banks in a lot of the smaller communities, because a lot of times, that's our entry point to, to, to work with some of those smaller businesses. And, and we really are here to help large and small, new and existing, kind of across the boards, just to be a resource. You know, I often say that, you know, we don't create jobs in medic, all we do is help facilitate the business in the county, make it easier. So, we appreciate the county's investment and look forward to partnering moving forward.
Thank you, Tom. Alright, moving on, next, the public forum, this is time set aside for public to make comments on topics of county business, other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. The microphone is open?
Just to comment, Sue, I know you've got great interest in, in some of the hog confinements and manure management plans. These are extremely detailed reports we get on each, each and every one. They're available in the supervisor's office, and anytime you see something on our agenda and you want to have information, you feel free to come in and look at them, because they are extremely detailed. This is something that they have to meet all the DNR requirements of the master matrix, plus, we look over them also. They're not done just, just willy-nilly, there really are hoops that each individual confinement has to go through.
Alright, anything? Here, nobody jumped to the microphone. The next regular session meeting will be on March tenth, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, March fifth, twenty fifteen, at one PM. There be no further business to come before the board, our meeting is adjourned at ten oh one. Thank you.